Sorry.
You're crazy, you're crazy.
I know, how about that? How about that? Yeah. I'm still not charged.
Yeah.
God, I've been pulled.
Good evening, it's seven o'clock, we're gonna start our regular meeting, how did we do?
Evening.
So, first of all, thank y'all for coming and welcome to our South Hill Regular Scheduling Town Council Meeting for Monday, July the 8th. Shall we pray? Our most gracious heavenly Father, we assemble here tonight and with your blessings to conduct the business for our town, our community, and our citizens. Dear heavenly Father, our community has been challenged once again, but of course, our people rose to the occasion, they did it in a safely manner, and we're so very proud of them, dear Lord. Dear heavenly Father, thank you again for the many blessings you provide for us, we wouldn't have these things without you. So dear heavenly Father, as we move forward tonight and in the future, may you allow and give us your guiding hand as we make decisions that we think is best for you and for others. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Shall we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Beer.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Yep.
Here. Here.
Thank you ma'am. Okay, council, you have in front of you the agenda for tonight, may I have an approval?
Certainly.
Okay, thank y'all. Good. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here a no. Thank you. I wanna take this moment to briefly, briefly talk about this past weekend. Our community faced a very horrendous loss, and but with the help of so many different citizens who opened up their businesses, to citizens who provided supplies, volunteered, support to all of our emergency personnel, and there are too many to recognize, but we are looking to the future and doing something. But again, I just wanna take that opportunity, we did have, within our fire department, we had fifteen that recalled additional medical assistance. I was informed yesterday, they were all home, and everyone is good. We have tonight, at my request, we have some representatives from our fire department here, so if you get the opportunity, please express your appreciation if you have not. But it's, and again, other than those things, and the other thing, and I mean this sincerely, is, you know, it was a loss to our community, to the business itself, my thoughts, and I'm sure that I can speak for the council with those families, because their lives are gonna be changed to some degree. And I was, yes ma'am, and to the, to the individual who lost their life, I want them to know that their, her family is in our thoughts and prayers as well. So, again, the community, again, rose up, again, that's one of the many things that I've said, as long as I've lived here, again, coming from North Carolina, but I consider this home, is whatever the cause is, or the support of whatever, this town uniquely steps up for whatever the need is. So I wanna take this opportunity again to recognize our fire department, and those members that are here tonight, I want you to share that, hopefully they're watching that tonight. And also want the other fire departments that are watching tonight, and EMS, and the police department, all the support people on, again, the town's appreciation on what they did for our community. And so, but please continue to keep the employees in mind and the family of the victim, because again, they're gonna need help in all this adjustment. And I will now ask Kelly to give the, the, the community and our council, and those that are here tonight, and I appreciate you being here tonight, the latest update, and it's not a question and answer in as much as just her giving an update, I'll preface that.
May, may I real quick, if I may?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, may I also, I do want to give our highest recommendations, thoughts, appreciation, and all of that to every EMS worker, every police department, every, everybody that did anything, whether they were in their official capacity or just as a fellow citizen. It was my, a part of my neighborhood that was in danger, I appreciate it, I was of my stick bed, but prayers went on for you, for all our personnel, and we do thank God that, except for that one person, we understand, there was no loss of life, which is a wonderful thing, except that one which Mayor has already said, we will be keeping in our prayers. I just wanted to let you know, I appreciate it, and everyone I know does appreciate it. We are not ignorant, but we do wanna thank the Lord as well, he oversaw it all.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. This is a, just an update on the response since the fire on July the 6th. I have spoke with Brian Thurman, who's the Regional Hazmat Officer with VDEM, which is also the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, and I've received this information from Lauren Pillow, who's a data projects administrator with Virginia DEQ, or the Department of Environmental Quality. The response contractor for Nutrien Ag is W E L, or well, I would assume, is continually pumping contaminated water from within the form of building footprint. They continue to collect runoff from the front and back of the building, the property line, thereby preventing further discharges to Mountain and Dockery Creeks. DEQ has delivered two sets of water samples to the Virginia Department of Consolidated Laboratory Services. The water samples were collected on July the 7th from the upper reaches of Mountain and Dockery Creeks, and they'll be analyzed for organic compounds and pesticides. The recovered contaminated water continues to be staged in frac tanks. Response partners are currently developing a waste management plan, including sampling and testing of the contaminated water for hazardous waste constituents. The response partners are developing a water quality monitoring plan to track contaminants as they migrate downstream. EPA's response contractor remains on scene today and continues to monitor the area for particulates and volatile organic compounds. No action levels were exceeded for any of the compounds. And Nutrien Ag's environmental monitoring contract, CTEH, also began conducting air monitoring yesterday, and their measurements are consistent with those collected by EPA's contractor. They're also collecting air samples for analysis. The current challenges are the timely disposition of collected fluids and mitigation of chemical debris prior to the end of the week heavy rains that are anticipated. Just so you know, the response partners include VDEM, the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, the US EPA, Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, Nutrien Ag, obviously, and their, their partners. Planned actions include continued management of runoff, continued air monitoring, overpacking of hazardous materials remaining in the building debris, removal of scrap metal that is currently being segregated, implementation of the water monitoring sampling plan, implementation of the waste management plan, and development of unified talking points for responding to media and public inquiries, obviously. Additionally, I was also made aware today that in response to this, and in light of, you know, documentation being sent out, whether it be to town council or to citizens, DEQ is going to have an incident-specific webpage on their website with FAQ up and running tonight. Additional information will be added once made available, so that way they're able to keep it up to date as things progress. We will certainly share this link on the town's Facebook page once it's made available. And I would say I can answer any questions, but I probably can't, but that is an update that I received today from the officials.
All right. All right, thank you. All right, and I think next on the agenda is a certificate of appreciation.
Yes, just very quickly, we had the pleasure of working with an intern, a high school student this year, for the last four or five weeks, he's with us for a couple more days, working specifically with the finance office on a project, and actually got, will be able to visit the county office tomorrow, and has also visited with Southside Planning District Commission. He was unable to be here tonight due to scheduling conflict, unfortunately, but I did just wanna recognize him, Mr. Charles Miller, we know him as Charlie, for his certificate of appreciation this evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then next on the agenda is citizens to address council, and this is in order, and again, I remind everyone, limited to three minutes. First is Mr. Reverend William Crenshaw, if you would come up to the mic and state your name, please.
Can I use your podium?
You sure can, yes sir.
Good evening to the South Hill Town Council, to everyone present here tonight. I bring you greetings from our president, Mrs. Thelma Salters, and all the members of Southside Youth Development Corp. I will get to the reason why we're here at the end. I do have a prepared statement I would like to read in your hearing. The Southside Youth Development Corp. is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) public service organization, which has been serving Southside Virginia counties of Brunswick, Lunenburg, and Mecklenburg for over thirty years. Our mission is to plan, promote, and conduct programs and activities that will guide and expose young children to focus on all avenues that will develop their passions for learning, growing, and becoming well-rounded, responsible, and engaged adults. We are all aware of the difficulties that our young people are facing in our world today. We read about it every day in the media, and we hear it all day long on the television. Southside Youth Development Corp. for the last two years has sponsored a fun day in the park. Our focus in the past has been on preparing children for return to school, and to equip them and give them an opportunity to come to the park and engage in good, clean, wholesome fun. We have learned that while those activities have been well-received, there was very little for parents and young adults to do. Therefore, we have expanded our focus to make this activity, this year, which will be held on September 7th from ten to three, a more inviting and inclusive event, which will not only entertain, but empower the community as a whole. We are asking that the council grant us a variance to the ordinance or rule restricting vendors in public access events at Centennial Park. We are looking for an opportunity to allow small table vendors to market their items of interest to young people and their parents, as well as members of the general public who may just happen to be in the park that day.
Sir.
Yes.
Sir, I'm just asking, can you close? Can you close in a couple of sentences?
Yes.
Can you close your comments in a couple of sentences, your time is up, I'm just being respectful.
Okay, I'm sorry, so we're just asking that, that the county, that the board of supervisors entertain, granting us a variance for that day to allow small table vendors and food vendors to come and serve those who might be in attendance at the activity as well as the public. The park is open to the public that day.
Okay.
So that is, that is the basis of our request.
All right, and I try, well, no, 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 there may be questions, hang on a second, okay, from council. But for clarity, I spoke earlier with our town manager, did it not also include possibility of closure of a street, of streets? Were you, and I want for clarity for the council to know as much as I know, but I think part of the request was the closure of the street, and would, and my question would be is, is it a closed street, would the vendors in these tables be in the street? Or you just wanted, asking for the street, this portion of the street to be closed?
Well, we were just asking that the- Well, we were just asking that, that Danville Street by the park be closed to through traffic.
Okay.
We realize that there are people who live along that portion of, of Danville Street, and some accommodation can be made for them to leave and come as they please.
Okay.
But we, we were just asking, in order to promote safety-
Yes, sir.
-and to give people an opportunity to circulate in the park, that the street would be blocked off-
Okay.
-from, from the beginning of the park down to Deutsch Lane.
From ten to three, so to speak. So, for clarity, again, I'm gonna ask again, just for clarity and for a minute, so what, but there would be nothing physically from your group being put in the street, just from a closure standpoint for safety?
That's right.
I'm not putting words in your mouth, but is that, that's what you're asking?
That's correct, to promote safety and, and access. If we, if you grant us the permission, you know, to have food vendors, they, they can park their vehicles in the parking spaces that are already present there on Danville Street, and people can walk back and forth, you know, between the vendors and the park.
But nothing physically in the streets?
No.
Okay. Council? Parking, of course. All right, so council, questions please ask, because this will require a motion if so deems.
Reverend Crenshaw, you mentioned the food vendor. What, and you mentioned other vendors which may be there, what other type of vendors do you anticipate showing up?
Well, at this point, we don't know how many people, how many food truck vendors might show up, but we, we will screen those people and, and select those that we think are most appropriate to the audience that we're trying to meet.
Chief? Do you-
I mean, it's not gonna, it's not gonna be a free-for-all.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we're gonna make sure that whoever we select and invite will be age-appropriate to the audience, the primary audience that we're trying to reach.
Chief, do you anticipate any difficulties with closing that street as far as for through traffic, not being allowed through there at all? Shouldn't be any problem?
What he's asking for, there should be an issue.
Thank you.
Will we have to let the, the neighborhood know that that street would be closed from ten to three?
So, what he's asking for is, I think, just to reduce, not allow through traffic.
Yeah, but I'm telling them to let them know.
Maybe do some flyers, something like that, stick at the door, something like that. That should be, I think he'll do.
Right, we understand that, you know, the rule about having vehicles in the park, and, you know, we're, we're, we have signed the contract, so we're familiar with the regulations that you all have placed.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right, and again, I don't have a problem with this at all. I just, I go back to chief, I know we have our National Light Out event there. Do we typically close the street for that?
No, sir, we don't.
Okay. So, again, I'm sure that our, our police, I just, I'm, you know, worried about maybe the information not getting out there properly, especially to family members or whatever that live on that street. We have our National Light Out, which we have a huge, usually attendance up in the park. So, that would be my only concern. I know our police police that area, so that would be my only concern.
Chief said he would notify them with flyers or whatever, let them know what was happening, so at least they can get in and out.
Counsel.
Kelly, how does Wanda typically handle this with making sure permits are right and everything like that?
Yes, so they'll, they'll obviously have to get permits through the health department, social and community.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, they'll, they'll have to, they'll be responsible for getting their own permits. That's all in the policy when they sign that agreement that they have. It's in there that all the vendors have to make sure they have their licenses and permits and that sort of thing. Which also includes business licenses.
Okay. What?
Question?
No? Answered the question I had.
Question?
The only thing that I would probably say was, is there any thought of, instead of having the food trucks on the road, possibly having them in the park so we don't have to close the road? That's just a thought.
We, we would ensure that the food vendors not be obstructing, you know, the road itself, because we, we recognize that people live over there.
Right.
So, we're, we're not trying to create a dangerous situation, we're trying to promote safety.
Yeah.
I think Ms. Fagan Spoon, I just want to make sure the information is correct. I heard her say that we don't allow vehicles, but like National Light Out and different things, we do have vendor, food vendors that set up in the Centennial Park, on the actual park.
The road, I'm talking about up in the road area, where the pickled hay, that's what I was talking about.
Okay, well, I know all around the park on the inside, we do set up trucks and stuff there, okay.
The road, per se.
Okay.
Thank you very much for-
Thank you.
...the opportunity to appear.
Mr. Mayor, looking for a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor and council, I would move that the request by Reverend Crenshaw for Community Empowerment, Empowerment Festival on September the 7th be approved with the stipulation that Danville Street in front of the park would be closed from ten AM until three PM.
To Deutsch Lane.
Excuse me?
To Deutsch Lane.
Oh, to Deutsch Lane. Thank you.
Second. Second. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Sir, you're good. All right, next is Mr. Wade Crowell.
I want to thank the fire department, police, rescue squad, they do a good job, and the town's been off for three or four days, and they still doing a good job when they are, because they ain't costing that much money. They ain't breaking stuff. All right. We had this fire up here. Those gas tanks sitting on the streets, on the sidewalk, that was the town's responsibility. The town is responsible for that accident. They're not responsible for the woman hitting it, but they're responsible for the woman dying, and they're responsible for all the damage done, so I hope they don't try to shuck it off on somebody else, because they let the gas tank sit on the street. If I put stuff on the street, I gotta get it off. Y'all wouldn't allow me to put stuff on the street. One person can't do it, and the other can. So, instead of, we need a person to go around town and find problems and turn them in. I do my part, but a whole lot of stuff I ain't that smart on. Now, on Ed Taylor last month, he wanted to apologize, so I want to apologize to Ed Taylor for me being right. He thinks he was right. For me being right, I want to apologize to Ed Taylor for me being right on Lee's Court, because Lee's Court is a welfare court. He don't think so, but that's what it is. All right. I'm gonna make mine sharp tonight, because tonight just ain't tonight to get into too much.
All right. Next is Mr. Tyler Howerton. If you would come up to the mic, state your name for me, please, sir.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of council, my name is Tyler Howerton. My wife and I live on High Street. We've been residents of the town for forty-plus years, and I'm not here to come in to complain, I'm here for some clarification. As I mentioned, we live on High Street, and there is a home being built just down the street from us, a single-family residence, and I'm sure they got the appropriate building permit. Three quarters of a mile away, there's an apartment complex that, you know, on Raleigh, and they're in another stage of their additions. I'm sure the appropriate building permit was gathered for that construction. My confusion is, once a build, once a residence is completed and signed off upon, years later, if there are ten people living in that residence, is that a violation of a town Single-family versus multifamily? A home versus apartments? I'm confused, because there are multiple residences in town now that were built as single-family, that now there are seven to ten vehicles there every night, and I don't know, I feel like they're probably contractors, employees of contractors, I don't know. But, again, I'm asking for clarification from council as when the single-family become multifamily, and is it okay? Thank you.
And Kelly, I would ask, either you have a comment, or is it something you'll take upon with you and your staff?
Yes.
Take it upon.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Paul Duffer, if you would come to the mic, sir, and state your name.
Good evening, council, members behind me. First of all, I want to thank the council for doing a duty and getting out here. I know everybody here appreciates it. Mine goes back a while to Mr. Stockton. I know Mike, Mr. Moody remembers Mr. John Stockton, and I called him out in the council meeting concerning these jutouts in the street, and he told me that Williamsburg had brick sidewalks. I said, yes, but they don't come out in the road. And anybody here, and I appreciate what Chief Bowen does to help us out on that particular street, but these two jutouts, and I asked Mr. Moody to meet me, and he did, and I discussed the fact that the only two they left were the most dangerous two in South Hill. And next thing you know, Mr. Callis is coming up, walking up the street, and they told me that the paperwork had been put in with Barker, that's who was gonna take them up, and nothing could be done. Well, I'm not the brightest fish in the tank, but it's a whole lot of people here that got good common sense, and most of them are probably behind me. But it's taken thirty-some years for this accident to happen all day. And you can look at these two jutouts, and I met Gavin Honeycutt, he was not across the line, he was coming out in the street, and I was making that turn, and I had to run up on the curbing. I wasn't pulling on a trailer, I just had a small four-door truck. But you can look at each curbing and tell the black marks that people are doing, the school buses have to get in a left-hand lane to get around them, and they have to get in the left-hand lane when they make this turn down here on, on South Hill Avenue. It is dangerous. We waited this long for this hazard to happen, and I'm thankful we've got a good fire department, but if something, if we keep waiting, and I asked Mr. Barker, and Mr. Barker said, he said, he told the town, they need to take those two out. He didn't say to leave mine. Mine was straight, straight, it was beautiful, and we had a, we had a handicap ramp, we had a crosswalk, they took the crosswalk out, the handicap ramp out, everything they could do to screw up the only one in town that was worth a toot, and left the two that's gonna cause problems someday, because when they hit it, they're gonna bear off into these buildings. If it'd been down here, the whole block would be gone. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Hatch?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we have a public hearing tonight with a request from Darren Smith, Carter Run LLC, to rezone five properties from C1 to C2, and that's the properties, there's five of them that Herbert Newman owns, it's right up above Food Line to the right. I'd like to open the public hearing for comment.
Is he in the face?
Yes, sir, if you want to comment, by all means.
All right, what we're gonna do, transfer one, one thing to the other, what does that mean?
We're going to C2 to try to get the, um, what is preferred to go there, to make it work. We're just moving-
Make what work?
Um, I, I, I don't know if I can actually say enough.
Well, is it gonna be a commercial building or houses?
It's gonna be a commercial building. Kinda like a convenience store to a flea market in a roundabout way.
So, on 47?
But I can let the gentleman who's here there to speak about it.
All right, but it's gonna be on 47?
Yes, facing 47.
Up that next to Food Line?
Yes, at the entrance of Food Line. Across middle Mexican store.
Oh, okay, all right. Where that parking lot is.
Yes. So, where the transfer trucks park at?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, I just wondered where it was.
If you would, ma'am, 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 did you have a question?
Yes.
If you could, come to the mic and state your name for me, please. If you would, please.
I was just concerned that-
Will you state your name, please?
My name is Joan Taylor, and I live on 124 Raleigh Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
I was just concerned, I don't, I don't know the protocol or what happens, but I understand that, like, if once it turns into commercial property, then if, say if our house was to burn down, we'd never be able to build another one there. Is that true?
No, not exactly.
Oh, okay.
That property is already commercial. It's just going from C1 to C2. It just makes it more, more available to do different things with the property.
So, do our taxes go up as far as this goes?
No, ma'am, it shouldn't affect it.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming and asking the question. Thank you.
Do we want Greg to make a comment?
Uh, if council, if, if council has specific questions or whatever, okay, but the public is still open for comment.
Okay. All right, I'd like to close the meeting for comment.
Okay, so, so council, before, I think Mr. Moody has a-
Am I closing too quick?
No, you're fine.
Okay.
All right, go ahead.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor and council, this request was approved by the planning commission last Monday night with the stipulation, the building that's being proposed is gonna be a little over ten thousand square feet, ten thousand six hundred and forty square feet. There'll be no fuel pumps there. It's not gonna be a strip mall. It hopes to be a standalone building, and it may be another building that will go beside Spoke with the developer, they do not have anything as of last Monday night signed as to who may be moving into the building. They have a good possibility. If the developer wishes to divulge that tonight, I will let him do that, leave it up to him. Like I said, maybe two buildings will go there. We do know that it is going up against a residential section off of Raleigh Avenue, and if approved, they'll, the motion will include that there will be a stipulation of a six-foot-high buffer to go between the commercial district and the residences. Is there anything else that I need to say, Mr. Stewart, you think?
I was just gonna clarify the buffer, just-
Yes, sir.
If that's okay.
If you would come up to the mic, state your name, please.
Yeah, thank you.
So, my name's Greg Stewart, I'm with Rets and Companies, I'm actually the developer. Darren with Carter Run is the, is our engineer, so he can handle any engineering or conceptual questions. I'm here more from a development standpoint, which is zoning, buffering, comprehensive land use plan. So, I actually have a printout, if you, if you would indulge, just so you can read it. It's, Mr. Moody and Mr. Hatch did a great job during the planning board of concerning themselves with the residential neighborhood and making sure that buffer was in place to make sure that it matched the community and the community citizens on that, on that avenue were considered. If you'll notice, I can run through the entire PowerPoint, this, this is the PowerPoint that was presented at the last meeting, but I know you guys have a lot more pressing issues, so I'll keep it short and sweet. If you just, uh, will refer yourself to the last page of the PowerPoint, and I apologize if I don't have enough copies, I thought there were seven, but I think I printed seven. And-
Okay, I'll bring it to you.
Yeah, so if you'll just refer to the last page, and Mr. Moody, this is, I think, I, I met with Mr. Hatch, this is, to me, the encompassing language that the planning board approved. If I, if I've misstated something, please feel free to let me know, and I'll read it out loud for the, for everyone to hear. "A ten-foot-wide vegetative buffer will be provided along any residentially-zoned properties that will consist of six-foot minimum height evergreen shrubs spaced to provide a mostly solid barrier. It is understood that the height of the shrubs when planted will not meet the minimum height, but the shrubs at the planting should be at least twenty-four inches in height and be a variety that will grow in time to meet the six-foot minimum height requirement. It will also understood this vegetative buffer will be able to be placed in the setback, which we discussed about, for, to making the property, not decreasing the property size, but also achieving the goal, and only be required if the second building is developed." Currently, right now- Currently, right now, we have a parcel that's maybe big enough for two, may not be, we're not sure. The current plan is for one commercial building in the right corner based on Food Line, and if there's space for a second, uh, property, and that's when the vegetative buffer will be added. So if that's, Mr. Moody, if I misspoke at all, please let me know, but that was what I took away from the planning board.
Yes, sir, you nailed it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, I'm sorry, question?
He had the first question.
Yeah.
So I just, I just wanted to know, his parking there and there, I know, I've always noticed some trucks and stuff parked there, like transfer trucks or-
It's just trailers from the transfer trucks. I'm assuming Herbert Newman is giving-
Oh, okay, okay.
Yep, I'm assuming that.
Okay.
For purposes of residents, one of which Ms. Taylors have been here with us this evening and has good questions, can you explain the difference between C1 and C2 for the public so that we can understand?
They, they get more restrictive. Each one gets more restrictive. We have three of them, C1, C2, C3.
C3 being the most, C1 the least?
Yes, yes, yeah, C1 being the least.
That helps not knowing the ident, the-
Yeah, we have a table permitted uses in the zoning, and we have to try to make the businesses fit in that table permitted uses. And this is the only way to achieve that, is to rezone the properties. Like C1 technically is not allowed, C2 it will be. That's the easiest way to say it.
Question, when he was saying about the buffer, and according to your paper, said that a buffer would be only required if you do the second lot, so the first building would not have the buffer behind it?
So the first building, and again, I, I don't have a conceptual plan in front of me, but if you, if you look on the parcels, you can, I can explain it by the layout. If you look at page, um, it's the current zoning map zoomed. It's the one that has the bunch of yellow on it. I think it's page four, where it says, it's titled Current Map Zoning Zoomed. Let me know when you're there.
Mm-hmm.
So the parcel in question is identified as that light blue shaded, and it's light blue because it's C1. Our initial, uh, building will be tucked in that bottom right corner, so it will be as far away from the residential property as possible. There'll still be an open lot if we do not develop that, uh, parcel, but if we do develop it and a building becomes closer to the residential, that is when we would buffer.
But the first building would not have a buffer behind it?
Current, currently, yes, ma'am.
Exactly.
That's correct.
That's what you're saying, okay, thank you.
All right, council. Okay, so to recap, we had, we opened the public hearing, we've closed it. We've had comments or representative on the commission on what took place. So what is your pleasure, council?
I'll make a motion that, um, the property rezoning case 2024-1, a request by Darren Smith slash Carter Run LLC to rezone five properties from neighborhood Commercial District C1 to general Commercial District C2, approve, I mean, presented by David Hatch.
Before a second, we should also include in the motion regarding the, the buffer zone. Would you like to?
Uh, so the South Hill Planning Commission recommends approval, the stipulation that was set. Also, I will add that the South Hill Planning Commission recommends approval along with the council.
Mm-hmm.
The stipulation that a six-foot-high buffer must be installed on the residential side of the property.
That's correct. Okay, so have that?
And that goes with, that, and with clear understanding, that goes from the beginning.
Yes, sir.
They don't wait to the second. That has to go with the first building, they have to have that buffer.
Have to have it with the first building, yes, sir.
That is correct.
Well, now, is that, is that what was stated? I want to be sure.
No, definitely, we changed, definitely stated.
Okay, all right. So are we clear on this now? I want it to be clear now, because if I understand, again, just for clarity in our minutes, if I understood you respectfully, sir, the, the, this, this, uh-
Buffer.
Buffer.
Buffer would be after the second building? But that's not-
That's not my, that's not my motion.
Right, I'm staying, I just want for clarity. I just want him to understand that as well.
Mayor, Mr. Stewart?
I'm sorry?
Mayor?
Yeah.
When we discussed it last Monday, we came up with a six-foot-high buffer on the residential side once the first building, at the beginning. This one that you presented tonight addresses a second building. When we talked about it was the first building.
Okay, so it was my understanding that during the planning board, we discussed if a second building was added closer to the residential properties, that a buffer would be put in place. Uh, and the reason being is if we rezone all those parcels, the parcels in which we would put the two buffers, they're not neighboring residential. Those are, they would be, they would be neighboring commercial. If it is, if it's the boards, if this is something the board is adamant about, I'm happy to accede to the condition that a buffer go in as long as the setbacks and the two, again, just to clarify, it can be in the setback, and then the two, uh, the 24-inch plantings can grow to six feet, not be six feet when installed, if that makes sense.
That's my understanding.
Yes, sir, if that, if that'll appease the council, I'm happy to agree with that condition.
Okay, so for my clarity, I'll say for my clarity, and will you please repeat the motion, please?
So my motion would be, uh, the rezoning case, again, will refer to number 24, um, dash one, request by Darren Smith slash Carter Run LLC to rezone five properties from neighborhood Commercial District C1 to general Commercial District C2 with an approval also with the stipulation that a buffer, six-foot-high buffer be installed on the residential side.
Just to clarify, six-foot after growth, correct? 24 installation, but to reach six-four, six-foot?
That is correct.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
And the clarity from my benefit is for the beginning of whatever on the first building.
As soon as, I, I imagine this will be a zoning issue, a zoning permit will have to be issued, so until we provide that buffer, they can always not approve our zoning permit.
Okay, I just want to make sure. We have a motion, do we have a second?
I will second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here and for the clarity, okay?
No worries, no worries.
We, we want to do, we want to do the work up front.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hatch, was that it? Mr. Hatch? Okay, uh, under administrative reports, uh, I would ask the council for a motion to approve these minutes.
So move. Do you have a question?
Okay, okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye. Any opposed?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I, I should, I should request, I have no opposition to the approval of the minutes, although I would request a clarification, and the council can chime in with respect to whether this is accurate or the best possible way to convey it. In the, in the minutes with respect to, let me point to the page, page two, to clarify this language with respect to Lee's Court, the street itself is Lee's Court, but to read the minutes as capably as they were prepared, uh, if we could have some clarification to say that, uh, what was suggested to us by the speaker was that Lee's Court is not private property, to say that the street named Lee's Court is not private property, because the subdivision itself is also called Lee's Court, and I don't want any confusion as to, as to who stated what was private property or what was stated to be private property, the street versus the homes in which people live. So just that we could clarify that.
Okay. Now, is Jesse, are you on the line?
Yeah, he's on.
Okay. All right, so my, my question would be is, we have a motion to accept as is in a second, so from a standpoint of clarity, do we remove that motion and amend to the motion?
Yes, I believe so.
I would think so. So who was the original? You was the original? Do you agree to, to amend?
Amended to the statement that Mr. Taylor just made.
Okay, and do I have a second to the amended motion?
Second.
Okay. Discuss, no, no discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is that okay, council?
Yes, sir, thank you, mayor.
Okay. All right, under items for approval, these are individuals, so Kelly?
I'll first have for you the financial policy adoption. Staff has worked with Davenport and Company to finalize the financial policy, of which a draft was started by prior administration but never formally adopted by town council. The policy works as a guide as it relates to several financial initiatives to include, but not limited to, the issuance of debt service, investments, and fund balance classifications. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ted Cole with Davenport, who's just going to give you a brief overview of the presentation that's included in your packets this evening, as well as the financial guide.
Okay.
Would you like to, or me to?
I could do it.
Just page down.
Good evening. I'm Ted Cole with Davenport and Company. Pleasure to be here. The information that's on the screen is also what you have in front of you, council members, hard copies, and then what was included in your agenda packet, mostly for information, but if there is a decision that you all would like to make this evening about adopting the financial policies, I think that is certainly just fine. I'm going to keep this brief, but happy to answer any questions. I am going to cover a few slides in this presentation. And I'm going to start with the, the table of contents. As Kelly said, we've been working on this refinement of the policy that was started under the prior administration for several weeks. I think we've gotten to a very good place. It was a very good document to start with. We just tweaked it around the edges. We, we've included in this discussion material some perspective to help you all understand some of the concepts that are included in the policy. And I think maybe one of the most important things for you to keep in mind is, by and large, everything in this document, you're already doing in one way or another. We're not creating new requirements or burdens, anything that's going to take, you know, a lot of extra staff time, or certainly new personnel. It's really memorializing things that you all are already doing, and, and ideally, these are things that would be adopted by council, which is why we're presenting to you. Um, and they can be reviewed on whatever cycle, whatever schedule you would like, and can be amended in the future. It's your document, it's your policies, um, and so you have the ability to revisit these over time if it's appropriate. So what's in the document is a brief overview. Along the way, we've included some comparisons of, of South Hill to other similarly sized Virginia towns, so you can understand a little bit in some of the, the ratios or policies that we've included, how do you compare to other local governments within Virginia? And by and large, on all of them, you compare very well. You, you have a very strong financial profile when we look at your reserve levels, we look at your debt levels. You do have a capital improvement plan for both the tax-supported debt and the utility debt, um, and these are things that we might help staff work with going forward. And the policies that we're putting in place, while they are, they are relevant, I think they provide good guidance, but they also provide enough flexibility for you all to consider doing some things in the future as it relates to capital, as it relates to issuing debt if it's needed or necessary, and, and using reserves if you determine it's appropriate. So we're putting some, some guidelines in place, but they're not so tight that you're unable to move forward with capital projects. They're striking that balance between being relevant and meaningful numbers and policies, but also giving you the flexibility to consider doing things. And in many cases, the language is written in such a way that you or future councils can make exceptions to those policies if you deem it appropriate and important. So it's, um, it's just, it's just a document that kind of works very hard to find that balance of giving guidance, giving some parameters, but not tying your hands so much that you can't do certain things. You have the ability to make exceptions if you determine that it's appropriate. An appendix A is the actual policy document. That is what would be approved and, you know, shared with people if they ever want to see what the town's policies are. Um, and then there are a few other things in the appendix that are just, uh, related, but would not be adopted. They're just helpful resources. So that's very high level, what's included in the presentation. I would say that it might be helpful to look at page four here. It's very high-level overview, um, much of which I've covered, but this is sort of the, the impetus, I guess, if you will, about why we might, you all might consider adopting policies. And again, gives you the ability to look at a document to help you make decisions, but also you, you maintain the flexibility to make exceptions and adjustments as needed. And over time, as your financial situation changes, you can always make updates to the policies as you determine is appropriate. Peer comparatives, I'm going to skip that. Try to get to page eight. Perfect. This is the major, um, structure of the policy document, and you'll see it in appendix A. It's very, very cleanly and neatly laid out. There's, uh, objectives that are stated. Why are we doing this? Why would, why are we considering adopting policies? Why are they important? There's a section on developing and updating the capital improvement budget every year. Ideally, you're updating and revisiting that capital improvement plan, not only for the tax-supported projects, but for your utility projects. Third, there's a series of policies related to budget. Four, certain debt policies. It goes into a lot of detail about different types of debt that you can issue, the pros and cons, where it might be appropriate, one option versus another, and then it does have some specific debt ratios or debt, um, debt measurements that will provide guidance on how much debt maybe is appropriate for a, a town of your size to take on. There are state statutes that tie into that. These are tightening down on that a little bit, putting a little more limitation to it, but again, not at a level where you're unable to address your capital needs. Number five is reserve policy. So we are, uh, addressing not only your fund balance and your general fund, your governmental side, but also in the utility side. And then lastly, investment policies. State statute drives a lot of that, but it puts a little more structure to it, um, and, and particularly noting the, the finance and manager to be collaborating on investment ideas and investment decisions, um, and includes a reporting component so that you all in real time, or in reasonably real time, have a sense of what investment activity is going on with town funds, um, so you're able to keep track of that on a regular basis. So those are the major categories. And then what we do is we go into a discussion of each of those, one through six. And again, I'm not going to go through all of those because of, of time, but I was going to flip back to the next steps. And, and again, I know it's a lot of information. If you're at a point where you're comfortable considering adoption, that's great. If you need a little more time, um, that, that works as well. This is on y'all's schedule. The next steps, which are back on page 27, you know, discuss these proposed policies, get any feedback from you all that might be appropriate, try to answer questions. If a revised version is, is desired, provide that, work with, um, with staff to develop that, and ultimately get it to a place where you all are comfortable considering adoption. And then move forward with whatever, um, additional planning work might be needed as you assess your capital needs going forward. I'm happy to pause there, answer questions if there are any.
Can I just maybe recommend, I know that, um, during discussion, we have, um, excuse me, not discussion, other business about scheduled work session. I mean, is it something that we could tag on to that possibly to be able to discuss it, or maybe the next meeting, or we give us an opportunity, everybody to look at it? What, what is everybody's thoughts about this? Because I'm not, I'm not, I'm not comfortable making a, to vote on it tonight by, by any means. I'd like to hear from the town manager and whoever else is involved, um, and then I just wanted to see what everybody else thought.
I think it'd be something we can and should discuss at the work session coming up, dealing with the future, yes?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item I have is the South Hill Volunteer Fire Department's street closure request. Um, the fire department's requesting to close South Mecklenburg Avenue at the main light to Main- to Main Street on Sunday, August the 4th, beginning at 8:00 AM until 12:00 PM, to conduct downtown aerial operations with South Hill Fire Department members, as well as Lawrenceville Volunteer Fire Department members. As information, they will not be flowing water or asking to use any rooftops, and the fire department will handle the street closure and reopening.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the South Hill Volunteer Fire Department's request to close South Mecklenburg Avenue at the main light to Main Street on Sunday, August 4th, 2024, from 8:00 AM until 12:00 noon.
Second. Okay. Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
And item C, we've already covered, correct?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, counsel. Uh, chief?
Mr. Mayor, I believe you have a proclamation before you that we would like approved as part of National Night Out. As councilors aware, last year, um, Deputy Chief Geist and quite a few members put a lot of effort into it. This year, I think is going to be bigger and better than last year. Um, we have, again, entered into, um, I guess the, if you want to call it a competition, but, um, to be recognized by Nat, the national part of National Night Out, um, and having this proclamation is just part of, um, I guess, a checkmark, um, that gives us another point towards, um, that goal, so.
Does any emotion?
I would say yes, we need a motion for approval.
So I'll make a motion that we, um, under, again, please support proclamation for National Night Out, move, yes, um, for 2024.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you, counsel.
Mayor and town council members, we have a couple of things tonight. The first one is, um, easement agreement with Dominion Power. The town of South Hill owns property in the intersection of Country Lane and Rain Street. Microsoft purchased the industrial property ops, on the opposite side of Rain Street where this easement would go. A new water tank and booster station is under construction to service the Microsoft site. Electricity from Dominion is proposed to run down, down Rain Street on town property and cross over to the site where the water and tank is going, and booster station. The easement will not impact future development for a town property, as line is well within the setback area and will be underground.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the town to grant an easement to Dominion Virginia Power utilizing the easement agreement provided by DVP and reviewed by the town attorney, and authorize the mayor or town manager to execute the easement documents and return them to Dominion Virginia Power for recognition.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The second item tonight is, uh, the solution of a easement in exchange for a new easement agreement. The town of South Hill has an existing easement on property at the end of Hollydale Lane. As this vacant lot was being surveyed to be sold, the surveyor discovered that the existing sewer force main easement paperwork did not match the ex, actual existing buried force main. The current owner is asking the town to release the existing paper easement in exchange for the owner granting the town a new easement around the existing force main. The town attorney is working with the landowner and the surveyor to resolve these easement issues. So tonight, you have a resolution and all that stuff in front of you.
Mr. Mayor and counsel, by resolution, I move for the town to dissolve the existing sewer force main easement across PRN 33718, in exchange for a new sewer force main easement that encompasses the existing force main utilizing the easement agreement documents and survey provided by the town attorney, and authorize the mayor or town manager to execute the easement documents and have the documents recorded at the Mecklenburg County courthouse.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, the next thing is the reports to be accepted as presented.
I'll make a motion that we accept the reports, um, as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, uh, the next item is under appointments. Counsel, uh, I think from the standpoint, we have, uh, an appointment motion that needs to be made going forward.
Mr. Mayor and counsel, I move to appoint Crystal Connel as interim clerk of council, retroactive to June 12, 2024, for a period of 90 days, effective today, July 8, 2024.
Second. Okay. Discussion?
Mayor, for, for clarification, is, is, should it be worded up to 90 days, or should it, is it 90 days period?
For pleasure.
It's just counsel's pleasure.
I would prefer up to 90 days, singularly so that there's clarity as we appoint a town clerk, whomever that is. No idea who that will be, will depend on, uh, sort of our decisions, applicants, et cetera. I don't want a situation where the town clerk, the newly appointed town clerk cannot begin their duties, because technically, we've enacted, uh, not a law, but a regulation, an administrative regulation that requires service for 90 days.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so.
I agree with that.
So counsel?
Mr. Mayor and counsel, I move to amend my original motion. My new motion would be to appoint Crystal Connel as interim clerk of council, retroactive to June 12, 2024, for a period up to 90 days, effective today, July 8, 2024.
Second. Okay. Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The next thing is an action item that carried over from our last council meeting, and due to various conflicts and trying to get all of us available, is, uh, our town manager asked that each one of us look at our calendars for the month of August to pick a work session, uh, to discuss this top, topic of economic development, and then what we've added tonight for clarity, uh, is the adoption or review of the policy map. So I would encourage someone to throw a date out, and then we all look at our calendars. So would somebody take that ownership and throw out a date? And I'm not making any specific eye contact. I'm, but I, but I am.
Kelly, when is, what date is our scheduled town meeting, town council meeting?
I knew you had asked for dates to come back. Did everybody respond with that so we could narrow it down a little bit better?
That was for July, I think.
Oh, that was for July? Okay, okay, all right, I'm sorry.
And we weren't successful.
Okay, all right.
It's okay. So, uh, everybody's looking around. Can I ask for?
I know Lisa has the toughest schedule with being out of town.
I, I know for a fact, um, on the 5th in the afternoon and on the 19th, those are flexible days and are, within our work schedule. So I'd actually be in town and unencumbered.
I would not for the 4th through the 10th.
I could do the 5th.
Oh, she says she can't do.
No, I can do the 10th.
Oh, you can't do the 4th, okay.
All right, well, okay, all right, I'll throw out, all right, we got our regularly scheduled council meeting on the 12th. How, and just asking, so I'm going to make an assumption, which probably is wrong, that we at least something, we made a point to be in town that day. So is there a day that week possibly we could pick? The week of the 12th, is that, I'm asking.
Did the 19th not work for, for anyone?
The 19th, which is the following month?
Right, that was a day that.
Oh, okay.
19th, okay.
Dr. Jordan is on. That's fine.
19th?
I'll make it work.
Okay, all right, now, with it, sir?
With that being said, I'm gone, but the same other people up here, I don't need to be.
No, no, we need to have a majority here.
Yeah, so, so let me ask respectfully.
In my opinion.
You'll have a majority.
Well, no, we won't, well, we will have a majority per se legally-wise, but I mean, we won't have a majority.
So, and I'm not being, are you out that whole week, sir?
I am.
Okay, all right, so.
About the 15th.
Yeah, the week of the 12th, all right, look, everybody look at the week of the 12th, just asking, the week of the 12th, does anybody have, we have council meeting that night, does anybody have a bad day the week of August the 12th? I'm good all the way.
What time of the day?
Well, that was going to be my next thing, what is a good time that's good for everyone?
Well, see, Dr. Jordan, and I know Dr. Jordan works, I work, and a lot of us work.
All right.
So I mean, we need to have it later in the evening where everybody can be accommodated.
Everybody can.
All right? How about, okay?
We're going to work with me.
All right, I'm working, all right? How about August the 14th at 6 o'clock?
The 14th is.
On a Wednesday.
You're okay.
How does that sound?
That's, August 14th?
6 o'clock.
Mr. Taylor?
Sure.
Don't go mute on me.
Got it.
All right, so right now, we have August the 14th at 6 o'clock, and, um, and if, and look, guys, you know, we're going to be here on the 12th, if something goes sideways, we can, we can re, we can regroup, so but right now, August the 14th at 6 o'clock, and for the minutes, we'll be having two topics of discussion. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Because we have to have it, you know what I'm saying and all that? Okay, all right. Now, uh, that concludes our regular meeting. As, as those that are watching and those that are here tonight, as you understand at the beginning of the meeting, I normally come out and close the closed session. We did not do that because we did not complete it. So out of respect of the, those that are here and those watching, we are now going to go back into closed session, because we never closed it, so we don't have to do another motion or whatever. So currently, right now, the council will resume back into closed session. Okay, all right, and counsel, if you would, we'll go to the back.